Mic check, check, check one. A B C D E F G H I J K L M N O P. Test, test, test. You got it? Do you get the sound? Check, 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 check.
Check, check. One, two, check, check. Sound check, one, two, check, check. Hello, hello. Testing, one, two, check, check, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Excellent. Test, test, test. Test, test. Test, test. Test, 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 test. Test, test. Need to do a sound check? Test, test, test. Test, test. Check one, check, 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 check. Test, test, test. Alright, we got it. Check, mic check, 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 check. Test, test, test. La 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 la. Test, test. Test. Check, check, check. Check. A B C D. Check, check, check. Check. Test, test, test. Check, 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 check. Audio check, one. Check, check, check. Check. Microphone check. Check, 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 check. Check, check. Test, 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 test. Check, check, check. Test. Test, test. Test, test. Test, test. Test, test. Test, test. Test, test.
How are you doing?
I'm Leslie.
My one question is, um, we're roughly talking into this. So may I come in on those speakers?
The home box is right there.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you.
Patrick, how are you? So, did you have something to come in? We need it for our building? Oh, okay.
Oh, that's what I'm now.
Okay. It worked the other day. Oh, I didn't realize that. Well, it should be a priority, but it has always been. Thank you. It just makes it easier to tell people live.
Maybe when you're not talking. It's up to you. Hi! How you doing? Thanks for, uh, thanks for working on your magic. See, is it okay if I told everyone thank you? Thank you, Pat Herter, the most awesome IT guy in the world. Pat Herter, the most awesome IT guy in the world. Yeah, oh yeah, say that loud. Hey, so I took all that stuff off my desktop and then, uh, Megan, what's his first name? Came and helped me get Lucy. Helped me get something back on, but I still need to do solstice stuff. I put it on my jump drive, so maybe I can get it. I may need some help, I'll let you know. Uh, one moment, please let me look and see where my day has been going. Is it? Wow. You should know how much trouble we had keeping clocks right.
I noticed.
I used to be really good at that. I used to climb on a chair and always remember that. I, not so much anymore. You know what? I, uh, at home I bought a wireless mouse wireless keyboard. I haven't had to replace them as yet, and that was March. Yeah, and I don't even always remember to turn it off. Most of the time I do. But yeah. 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 I like that thumb, the thumb ball. Is that what you have? Yeah, and then when I come back to the office, I'm like, oh, I'm trying to find. Okay. Yeah, someone asked me if we're live on channel two. I'm like, I think so. Yeah. That was a reporter, um, her address was AP, but she may be from the star, I'm not sure. I talked to her on my way down here. Okay. Two more minutes to accelerate. Steven, do you have your same assignment?
Nice.
We didn't hand out numbers this time, did we? Oh, you have a list, you'll just read off of there. Brian. How are you?
Good. Three minutes. Three minutes, three minutes.
I'd be straddled there saying, how are you?
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Holland. I'm president of the Kansas City, Missouri Board of Parks and Recreation Commissioners. And to my immediate right is David Mecklenburg, Board Commissioner. And to my immediate left is Chris Good, Board Commissioner. To my far left is Terry Reiner, Director of the Parks and Recreation Department of Kansas City. We're here this evening for a public hearing regarding the potential naming of a Parkway and Boulevard in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King, and more specifically, the renaming of a major compilation of thoroughfares known as Blue Parkway, Swamp Parkway, and Volker Boulevard. In addition, we will also hear any testimony regarding other ideas, but we are specifically addressing a specific request for that thoroughfare and roadway to be named after Dr. Martin Luther King. The Board of Parks and Recreation were given this task by the mayor and council, who, after having been involved in several years of discussion regarding this effort, determined that it would probably be best if the Parks and Recreation Board and department handled this, since many of the ideas that have been submitted in the past were on boulevards and parkways and streets that are under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Department. So, that's why we're here tonight, is to take public testimony regarding this effort. And in the course of your testimony, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions you have regarding the process that we're involved in right now. So, to that end, do any of the other commissioners have any comments? Mr. Good? Then we'll dive right in. First person who registered to speak is Amy Dodge. Amy?
If you back with me, I said no. I had to write my name down.
And you're with the star?
No, I wasn't speaking yet.
I'm sorry. That's good. Thank you. Uh, we may have some other press on this list too, so, Byron Johnmeyer? Mr. Johnmeyer? If you would identify yourself and identify your address, please.
It's, uh, Brian Johnmeyer, and I'm at thirty-three thirty-six Paseo Boulevard, here in Kansas City. So, I think the big thing that a lot of us don't understand is the transparency. I know you guys are going to vote on the recommendation to rename the proposed street section. There are several of us out in the community that don't understand the transparency and the following of our charter that is on board to the process and the functionality of renaming a street. I just want to ask you guys, when you go to, to vote, that you make sure that you are following the charter, making sure we have the proper signatures, because we don't have the transparency as a community to look at what you guys have available. I know that that was one thing that we made very clear to the mayor during the Paseo situation, that we were not involved as Paseo residents. Didn't have the proper signatures of the people and the businesses within the corridor of the renaming. So, what we want to make sure is that you guys follow the ordinance and make sure we don't end up in the same situation, and make sure that we have all the transparency that is needed. During the ninety-day period, um, for the suggestions, there's been anything that we can find, no information as to what was actually suggested, what was the top five suggestions. So, can you answer that question?
Sure. And maybe I'll defer to Terry on the specific process, although part, this particular hearing is part of that process.
Okay.
And that process is set forth in the charter and the rules and regulations of the Parks and Recreation Board.
What about the charter for the renaming piece of it?
The charter gives the Board of Parks and Recreation Authority, uh, the responsibility and authority for naming and renaming boulevards, streets, and parkways under its jurisdiction.
Correct.
And there are many miles of that in the city.
With the proper signatures, do you guys have all those?
It's, it's not an initiative petition. It can be done by the board on its own after a specific request for a renaming to be considered, and after a appropriate time and set of hearings.
Okay.
Terry, do you have anything else?
Um, I would just add, uh, thank you, Commissioner. He's correct. There is a naming policy, uh, for the Board of Parks and Recreation Commissioners. Two-thirds of this roughly from Elmwood, um, to Brookside are under the jurisdiction of the park board. The section that is under the jurisdiction of the Public Works Department is Blue Parkway from Elmwood East to Fifty-Fifth Street. That process, um, is, is not quite as clear. It talks about honorary street names, it talks about original street names. We are taking it through the Street Naming Committee. Then it will eventually go to the city council. But that policy does, um, require, um, participation from adjacent property owners. So, assuming this board, well, I'm not going to assume anything, but if this board would approve the recommendation, then the next step would be notifying those property owners, and, um, I believe, if I have the numbers correctly, a, a minimum of fifty with a seventy-five percent in favor of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Falber?
Thank you. You asked for citizens' opinions, and around eight hundred people expressed their opinions to you. Of those people, it came out pretty much the same as the mayor's advisory committee, except for one thing. The number-one suggestion from the citizens was a park or improve the park we have. We have a large park, and it's currently being taken care of more by volunteer citizens than anyone else, and thank you to a certain quarterback, it's going to get some playground equipment that it has desperately needed for a long time, so, thank you, sir. The number-one other suggestion from the citizens was the airport. That's not on the table, because the FAA has said no. It's too confusing, they're not going to change the name of the airport, and an honorary name on the terminal, they didn't care for that idea either a couple of years ago. Narrowing it down from there, Sixty-third Street remains the number-one street choice of citizens. Going on down from that, the next biggest, uh, choice was, I love this, J.C. Nichols Parkway, currently called Mill Street Parkway, with fifty people suggesting that. Nineteen people suggested Emmanuel Cleaver the third, or the second Boulevard be changed to honor Dr. King. That came in with nineteen people. That was more than Swope, Volker, or Blue combined. So, what we have once again is the citizens, about eight hundred of them, took the time to send you and their opinions, and once again, they're being ignored in favor of one group and one suggestion. So, unless you want a replay of the citizens saying, hey, we told you what we would go for, we told you what we would support, and being ignored, well, you have the information, I have the numbers, I have all of the emails from all of those people, all of those citizens that responded to your request for information. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Spence?
Okay, that was quick. As I walked into the building, as I walked into the building, I noticed the exhibit of the assassination of Martin Luther King Jr. I was a senior in high school at Central and was tear-gassed when the principal sent us all home. So, I'm particularly concerned about the brouhaha. That was fifty-plus years ago. Since that time and during that time, they tried naming a school after him, which is now defunct. They've named a park, which the Parks Department does not care for, as the lady pointed out, and, uh, a few other ancillary places. So, we're fifty-plus years away from Martin Luther King Specter. Since that time, we've elected the first African-American president. So, this tells me that this whole idea about this boulevard has a hidden agenda that is not perpetrated by the folks who live in the community, but by those outside the community. Initially with, with the renaming of Truist, it brought up the entire historical, uh, information on how gentrification takes place and how minorities and lesser folk are moved east. Naming streets has been such a divisive thing. I don't know why we're engaged in this conversation logically, when we have said nothing, not one African-American so-called person holding up this MLK banner has mentioned Barack Obama.
Thank you. Jim Chambers? Jim Chambers? Angela Bass?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. The mission statement of the Kansas City Parks and Rec Department says, "To improve the quality of life, health, and wellness of our community by providing socially equitable, community-driven programming, and environmentally sound natural resource management." Angela Bass, I'm a Kansas City, Missouri resident, fifty-one years old. I'm college-educated here in Kansas City. I've served as a legal assistant for thirty years. I got my start in the legal assistant field at City Hall. I now work for the largest law firm in the world, one of the first legacy offices of which is Kansas City, Missouri. This is my hometown. I raised my family here. More than anything else, I stand here tonight as an ambassador of the Parks and Recreation Department. I am one of the volunteers who is especially interested in Martin Luther King Park, particularly interested in Truist Lake Park, and generally interested in all of the Kansas City, Missouri parks. Kansas City, Missouri parks are our city's greatest Kansas City, Missouri parks are our city's greatest asset. It keeps the city alive, both in the natural world and the mental health world. You can't replace the boulevard system that we have inherited. We need to adopt a minimum public standard in our parks. And that minimum public standard is enough trash cans, daily pickup, equitable action in the neighborhoods. Many of our parks, from Arno Park all the way to Loose Park, many of our parks are simply overrun with trash and dumping. Since last fall, I have become a serious ambassador for the parks, and this needs to be our thrust. That's going to involve a lot of community involvement. I'd like to see our efforts placed in unity, community outreach. Let's find a way to have 1,500 ambassadors of the park. Core ambassadors. Let's get a word-of-mouth, on-the-ground effort, especially during this pandemic while people are using our parks so much. Truist Lake Park, for example, is used by hundreds of people for all sorts of activities, families, friends, a lot of things. This is going to require leadership. You are the leaders of the Parks and Rec Department. I understand you've been given this task to rename the boulevard. I think that this is not going to be a sustainable action plan, it's going to be fraught with divisiveness. I would implore the board to steer towards bringing equity throughout our neighborhood parks. Let's put our energy towards that, towards a sustainable action plan. I think my only real question so far, from what I've heard, is is this something that the board, that you actually can say no to, or? I don't quite understand how that third piece fits in and without having, I understand the part that it's, this is not going through a vote through the general population. Is that a wise choice, does this board think?
Well, under the charter and the rules and regulations of the Park Board, it is the responsibility of the Park Board to deal with naming and renaming of streets, boulevards, and parkways under its jurisdiction. And yes, we can say no.
Okay, thank you. I would like to talk further and get further involved as an ambassador in the parks as time goes by, and one thing I would like to mention that, yes, Martin Luther King Park, I haven't been there for a while because honestly, I, Dr. Martin Luther King Park, you know, it's got some real, real problems there. The new park by Mr. Holmes is going to be fabulous, that park needs a lot more, though. And that whole walkway, all the way to the Fountain of Flame, that whole thing, we're almost there, I mean, look at all that valuable real estate that's already there, and it's just that close where the whole thing, make a statement that way, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Wolfop?
Thank you, Mr. President and Board. My name is Kevin Wolfop. I am the Director of Membership Engagement and Activism with the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Greater Kansas City. Let me remind everyone that our organization was founded by Dr. King along with some Southern ministers 63 years ago. So as I believe, I asked Commissioner Good and the Director there whether it's for the boulevard or the park. It is important that we be a part of the conversation. That's all we ask. So I just wanted to say that right offhand, so I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I would like to quote a gentleman from the comment session on Tuesday, I couldn't make it to that session, I couldn't attend, but the gentleman described himself as a community activist. His name was Pat Clark. Now, he's quoted as saying the following, this is a direct quote. Everywhere there's a Martin Luther King drive, there's death, drugs, and destruction. Then he went on to contradict himself when he kind of slightly corrected that statement by saying, and I quote, "And that's not everywhere, but it's pretty close to it." Let me say this, there's no proof that naming a street in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. causes any of the things he mentioned. I'd like to remind Mr. Clark and others of his opinion that we have 142 murders in Kansas City right now. So there is already death, drugs, and destruction in our city. Already, along the corridor of the street formerly known as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, the poverty rate is much higher than the city average. Already, the median home value is about half the city average. Already, the median household income is much lower than the city average. Already, the crime rate is much higher than the city average. I can go on and on and on about the negative factors that plague our low-income black communities right now. And there's no street currently named in Dr. King's honor. We did have a street named in his honor for less than a year, but these key indicators of community misery also existed before putting Dr. King's name on that street. Let me repeat, there's no proof that a street honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. increases the misery index of any community, let alone our community here in Kansas City. There is proof, there is proof that past and present systematic and systemic abus, neglect, and injustices of redlining, racism, segregation, divestment, and disenfranchisement on the local, state, and federal levels are the causes of these miseries. In other words, having Dr. King's name on a street is not a curse to a community. The problem has to do with systemic and systematic failures, not witchcraft. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. led the fight against inequality on the local, state, and federal levels, and we must keep fighting it there. Now, the last time we renamed a street to honor Dr. King, the group opposing us pointed out as one of their premises, the protection of a GM Crow segregation project called the City Beautiful Movement. Now, I know there is not much time to get off into all the intricacies of that project. I'll just say this, number one, it was a failed project and design, extremely maintenance-intensive, and only in the first three years was the Park Department able to maintain it. Much of it had to be graded over at that time. Number two, it was a big fat maintenance bill for the city. Number three, it was a mechanical nightmare. Number four, it resulted in the displacement of blacks who immigrated here from the rivalries of the GM Crow South, and they were called pickanannies, living in shotties. As far as the communities, and there are more than 1,000 of them right now in county that honored Dr. King with the name on one of their streets, as far as these communities are concerned, don't matter if they're rich, middle-class, or poor, these communities wanted to honor the man who fought and died for them. They should be congratulated, not condemned. They should be commended, not criticized. Let's rename Volker, Swope Parkway, and Blue Parkway in honor of this great American civil rights champion, Nobel Peace Prize winner, and the only U.S. citizen with a national holiday in his name, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you.
Carl Stafford?
So I'm Carl Stafford, President of Gregory Ridge Neighborhood Association, 5th District, also the founder of My Region Wins, which is a multidisciplinary nonprofit organization that helps in the development of concepts. The idea of having a park and a school in the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s name are two prominent things that should be paid attention to and really vetted out at its best before adding anything else. The idea of a school in his name and a park, that trumps the idea, blows it out of the water of a street or a road. I would ask you all to go investigate those other cities that have these names, and what is that demographic, that crime rate, what does that look like, and what does the people there actually look like? There is highly talk about, oh, that's an indicator, who's going to live on Dr. Martin Luther King's street? Who's going to want to come to this area and appreciate it? I'm asking, is it interesting to you, to you, to anybody that does not look like the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, to come to that area and appreciate it? I'm wondering, a park and a school, there's a chance, especially when we go ahead and make the park create a real sign that says Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, a piece that people will stand in front of, behind, next to, and want to take a picture of. The park is right down the street from a museum, I mean, artist. The idea of bringing sculpture pieces from around the world that has to deal with social issues and display them in the park, now the park is generating income, now there's energy there. The same with the school. So concentrate on what we already have to honor this great man, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., before we think about doing a Kentucky bluegrass, meaning real shallow, attempt at trying to say, yeah, we recognize something. Because who else in the city, the state, has a school and a park in this man's name? So please think responsibly. Terry, return my email.
Thank you. Emmett Pearson?
Good evening. Emmett Pearson, President and CEO of Community Builders of Kansas City. We own most of the land from Kensington to Prospect. Our developments are Blue Parkway Sun Fresh, shops on Blue Parkway, Blue Parkway Office Building Number Two coming soon, the Rochester on Blue Parkway, and we have, if you read the Business Journal, we have a $100 million project coming right up the street at the old Zion Grove, as well as the old Houston Shopping Center. I'm mixed about the whole conversation about turning Blue Parkway, and my focus really is on from Kensington to Prospect. I'm mixed because if it's going to look like Shoal Creek Parkway, Cersei Creek Parkway, then I might be on board. But let me just say this, and for your references, I'm going to leave with you the Boulevard and Parkway standard adopted in 2010, and right now, Blue Parkway is not even up to your own standards currently. However, you all asked us as developer and community builders as developer to make sure that it gets up to the standard when we go for another development, but I'll leave these for you all as reference. Just quick reference, so you all know what I'm talking about, and so the public knows what I'm talking about. There's supposed to be no turn lanes, dedicated turn lanes on Parkway. We have them, we have them right at Prospect as we're going back west. There's no, there's very little plants in the medians, that's part of your standards. We don't have enough trees, that's part of your standards. So I'm really at a loss here as to how I feel, because our organization has spent 30 years going from 25 feet of floodwater, for those that are from this community, to where we have over $280 million worth of development. And I don't know if there's proof or not about, you know, streets being named MLK, but I'm going to say this, I have struggled in my travels to see an MLK street that really exemplifies the work and the charisma that Dr. Martin Luther King lived for. We have spent our own resources, political capital, here locally, at the state, and at the fairs, to provide economic opportunity for goods and services that are not met in this community, right outside of this door. You can take a look at it, it's there, you can touch and feel it. So again, if in fact you all are going to recommend the name change, and you're going to put the resources behind it to make sure that we all can be proud of, and it is the example of what to look toward, then I might can get on board. But right now, I'm 50/50. So I'm just being very honest with you all, you know, with regards to the park, you know, if you look at what was planned there in 1996, there was a hotel, there was housing, there were shops. I love our quarterback, fantastic, but I think we can do so much more there to act as the next catalyst from the Plaza to Foundation Row, to the universities, to MLK Park. So let's get something that keeps that catalyst and connect on to the work the community builders have done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lunday Turner? Jim Gerlt?
My name is Jim Gerlt, I'm 72-years in residence of Kansas City, and... My name is Jim Gerlt, I'm 72 years in residence of Kansas City, and I was one of the people that wanted to preserve the name of the Paseo, I want to preserve the history of Kansas City. I don't believe naming streets, something new, preserves history. If we look back to November of 2019, after the voters, the public, me, decided to change the name back to the Paseo, many were left wondering how Kansas City can honor the civil rights icon, Dr. Martin Luther King. I'm one of those people that honored Dr. Martin Luther King. There was something brought up at that time, and I want to bring it up again for your serious consideration. Kansas City already has a school named after Dr. Martin Luther King, and there's a park where Dr. King is also recognized. And if you didn't know that, which very few of us did, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Square Park sits between two major thoroughways, Cleaver Boulevard and Swope Parkway, east of Paseo and west of Prospect. This park has 42 acres, yet very few people are aware it even exists. According to a constituent that lives across the street from the park, when asked by local news media, if she knew what the name of the park was, she says, no, nobody knows the name of that park. Well, it may be no one, not no one that knows, maybe several do, I don't know. But ever since the voters decided to change Martin Luther King Boulevard back to the Paseo, many have wondered how we can honor Dr. Martin Luther King. There is already an elementary school and a park, why not leverage those assets that we already have in place, which I think would be a much better tribute to the man than just naming a street? So the same woman that was told the name of the park, she says, are you serious? I'm quoting, that's Martin Luther King Park? That's disrespectful, there's nothing to that park. Few people realize that they have this park sadly, and this park fails to honor his legacy. There's more we can do to honor the right, the struggles of civil rights, and what better way than using something that we've already have in place, particularly a park of that size and potential? So after the Paseo controversy, I'd like to say that the least Kansas City, and I hope the Board of Parks recognizes this, is involve the people, and I applaud you for doing that.
Hi, I'm Alex. I live in the Northland, but still technically Kansas City, or I live north of the river, but still technically Kansas City. And I just wanted to come out to speak in favor of anything, anything that makes the city more inclusive, any initiatives, anything. People are talking about schools, people are talking about schools and parks and anything, and I just wanted to voice, voice my preference that any initiatives that make the city more inclusive and more community-oriented are probably a step in the right direction in the uncertain and chaotic times that we live in, and I just wanted to make sure that that opinion was expressed to someone, so. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. First of all, let me congratulate you for holding this session, and congratulating you for allowing the public to have an opportunity to speak on this very important question. First of all, I want to say I appreciate and respect all of the opinions that have been given, because folks have the right to give their opinions on this issue. This is the reason why we have this type of forum. Again, my name is Ajamu Webster, and I'm a business owner here in Kansas City for the last 32 years, right up the street on Swope Parkway. And I had the honor to serve as a Commissioner of Parks and Recreation and for the city of Kansas City, Missouri, from 2007 to 2011. One of the most important things I learned right off the bat, when I sat on the Board of Commissioners, was the history of Kansas City and its relationship as relates to parks and recreation. And it was interesting to me, when I learned that, I learned the role that the Parks Department played, unfortunately, in supporting segregation in Kansas City. Many people may not be aware of the fact that the Swope Park Pool was such an issue for keeping African-Americans giving us the right to swim there, they went all the way to the Supreme Court, and that the Parks Department decided, and the city decided to shut it down rather than integrate it. Many African-Americans realize and remember that there were parts of Swope Park that were segregated, that we only had one part of the park that we could actually visit. And this was not just the history of Kansas City, it was the history of America, and it was not just the history of the park board, it was the history of the entire town and state. The park board was a reflection at that time of the views and the values of the community. And so I'm not, was not surprised that the park board participated, but I was happy that the park board was open about it, enough to talk about it, and take an opportunity when it came up to do something about it. So when this question came up about the naming of the street, Dr. Martin Luther King, I reflected on that. I reflected on it because in Kansas City, people really take for granted that you can go to any park you want to, whatever racial group you are, particularly African-Americans were excluded, and be welcome. You have the right to be in any park. You have the right to drive down any street in Kansas City, any Boulevard in Kansas City, and no one's going to tell you, you're past 27th Street, I'm going to arrest you. And that used to be an issue in Kansas City. We have the right to proclaim to the rest of the country that this is a place where you can have conventions and conferences, because Kansas City is progressive and open city, and we all enjoy that. But Dr. King took a bullet for that. Dr. King died for that. He died for us to have the opportunities to do that. He didn't have to die for that. He could have taken a safe position, he could have said, why me? He could have said, I'm just a young man. He could have said, I'm going to wait. He could have said, I'm going to follow the conventions of the majority who feel that it's not time. He could have said it would cause chaos. He could have said it would cause division, it would be divisive. But he took a stand, and because of that stand, all of those things that we brag about, that we are proud of in relation to Kansas City, and particularly as it relates to our ability to use public spaces, he died for that. And it's ironic that we are having this discussion at one of the most difficult times in this country, when the country is really now coming to grapple with the questions of race. And we don't have to grapple with those questions when it's just about naming a school, when it's just about naming a park. But when it comes down to naming a street, when it comes down to this might go by my house, when it comes down to this might be something I might have to drive on, when it comes down to that, all of a sudden, who we really are comes out, and we forget how comfortable it would have been for folks like Dr. King to not have stepped up. But this is our time to step up. And what is gratifying to me, that knowing the history that the Parks Department had played in segregation, is gratifying to me that the Parks Department is taking the leadership, that this board, this commission is taking the leadership on an issue, not because it's popular, not because it's going to cause some people, and they're afraid that it's going to cause some people to be uncomfortable, not because, you know, it's just about, let's do whatever the majority says, that's not leadership. Leadership is standing on principles and being able to project yourself beyond this time and space, so you can create a legacy. I maintain there is no one, there is no one in American history who better represents that, who paid more of a personal sacrifice than Dr. Martin Luther King has himself. Man left a family behind, a young man. And if he would do that, then surely, in 2020, enjoying all of the benefits that he left behind, he and the movement SCLC, and I take my hat off the SCLC, enjoying all those benefits, surely, surely we can look beyond whether or not this might inconvenience me, whether or not I think I might have to drive down the street and see the name, whether or not there's, whether or not I don't like it because it goes past my house. We got to get beyond that and say, who do we want to, people to remember us as? Do we want to be remembered as people who stood for healing and justice, or do we want to be remembered as one of the folks who stood back in the background and let other people make the sacrifice? So I commend the Board of Commissioners of Parks and Recreation, this is leadership, but I plead, I plead with the citizens of Kansas City, to have a broader vision about what this city and what we can become. It wouldn't matter to me if there were 20 streets named after heroes and sheros who have made substantial contributions to the quality of life that we live now. I would be for all of them, but I couldn't be for any of them if I couldn't be for Dr. Martin Luther King. I congratulate you, thank you.
I wasn't sure I was going to speak. I came here to listen and learn, because sometimes I give my opinion without knowing all the different reasons people may be for or against something, but I do want to speak on, after hearing some of the opinions that I agree with, not at all to belittle the school or the park, but they are isolated, they're in certain specific places, and it's easy for people to either, like this gentleman said, not even be aware of them, or if they are, to never go there, to never be there. And I think a Boulevard that goes from the easternmost to the westernmost part of the city, this is why I was in favor of 63rd Street primarily, but if that's no longer an option, I'll say that I am in favor of naming the Boulevard, so that everyone in this city has an opportunity to reflect on the history, the legacy, the problems that exist still in our city in terms of segregation and inequality, and where we want to be in the future. And I think that that is one good way to do that, that everyone can access and not have to go to a specific isolated location to do that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To all this present, and especially to the ones at the head table. My name is Dorothy Pew. I am 86 years old, so I've been around for a little while, praise God. And I wanted to voice my opinion concerning how we could pay tribute or give honor to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Usually when someone passes and you want to give honor to them, seemingly it's always to want to name a street or something like that in honor of that person, or someone that's mentioning a little park, or something to that effect. I've been prayerfully thinking about this, and I feel like the Lord has leaded me to share with you, we have an airport that's going to be built, and I don't know if anyone ever here in the United States have an airport named in honor of a freedom person, to give Dr. King honor. So I was thinking about that, and this is where I want to voice my opinion about, this would really, I feel like, giving him the honor that rightly do him, and the person of who he was, for you to consider and think much about naming, where KCI Airport is, naming Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Airport. To me, I feel like this would give him more honor than naming a street, which that's so what we normally usually do, or a park, or whatever. So this is what I wanted to share with you, to think and consider. If it has to be on a ballot, to be voted, or whatever, at least do whatever you need to do, that everybody could vote for, or whatever. But this is what I'm thinking, and this is prayerfully, I feel like the Lord has, has leaded me to share with you, that with the new airport that's being built, still doesn't have a name, that I know of, and I feel like this would give him the honor that so rightly do him, is the name, the new airport, MLK Jr. or Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This is what I wanted to share with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm basically in agreement with what was just said. I've been an advocate for naming the airport, the Martin Luther King International Airport, so I don't have much to say. There's a group of us who are trying to push that, and we're asking everyone that agrees with that in the community, that they would come together with us and speak, let us hear their voices, let you all hear their voices, so that hopefully this may get done. I'm not against the streets or the parks, none of that, you can do more than one thing, but again, to honor a man like that, I think it needs to be bigger than that. And so that is what we are talking about, when I say we, community advocates that are talking about it in the community, and we are going to continue voicing our opinions about that, regardless of who else comes forward with other ideas. Lots of people have bottom lines and reasons why they come forward with ideas, but we're for real, and we really want to see that honored, so that's my stance on that.
Good evening. This is a first-time experience for me, but I feel very strongly about the naming of streets, and I'm a native of Kansas City, Missouri. I grew up in Kansas City, Missouri. I've watched Kansas City evolve from being very segregated and becoming a little less, but we still have some issues and we still have work to do. I grew up up here on 54th Street area, which was a very little segregated pocket, and I remember when there were no buses that even came past 47th Street, and so we had to walk to 47th Street to be able to catch a bus. But my concern is how concerned it is to everyone about naming a street. We grew up in a city where the streets were automatically just named, and we had no say-so. Whoever the powers should be, named those streets after persons that they thought would be most prestigious, or most gratifying, or whatever the streets were named. So now we come in 2020 about naming a street after someone that has done and paid great, a great debt to be able to change what goes on in America. So Martin Luther King, it doesn't really matter because his legacy is there. I'm not objecting to naming the street, but I just find it quite funny that we have Volker Street and all those other names and everybody is happy with it. But when it comes to naming a street after a black person, it's, oh, wait a minute. Should we name this street that? What is it? Is there something still going on amongst us? And we all have to answer ourselves, why? A school? Martin Luther King is not even functioning right now. It's not a school. It's a past name in history. A park that nobody knew about? Still segregated, still, still in its own little corner. And we're bigger than that, Kansas City. We need to continue to evolve and to make this city the city that we say it is. So I would say to you, really think about that. If we're going to name the city, don't just, the name after Martin Luther King, don't just keep it in a little pocket. Let it represent the whole city from the river all the way out south. Because he did not represent a small little pocket. He represented the whole wide world of looking at changing and doing something different and making our nations come together. We're in a very, very tight situation right now. We're all beginning to look at ourselves, or we should be looking at ourselves and saying, what is the motive of why we're doing this? Look at your motive of why you're doing it. Is it just for name and prestige? Is it just for to preserve something that you already knew? Or is it for to be able to really make a definite change? So I say to all of my fellow Kansas Cityans who are grappling with this idea of naming a street, think about why you really want to or why you really don't want to. A name is important. And everybody has a name and all of our names are important. Names tell something. They give information about you. They declare where you're going to be and what you're going to do. So just remember, when we say Martin Luther King, what does it say about him? What does it say about us? Or do we want to stay contained in that little pocket that we had? Or do we want to grow and be bigger? Do we want to show the world that yes, we have grown, we have improved? We are learning from each other. We are encouraging each other. And that's what it's going to take. It's going to take love and respect to be able to move forward. And I agree with this gentleman here that was sharing with us a lot of information. It is so important for us to move forward as a city and see if we can stop what has, what I grew up in. I was a new person. When I went to high school, I was at the beginning of the segregation, of non-segregation. So I've watched us. I've seen us. And I'm sure many of you have. And so I would say, let's, let's be bigger. Thank you.
Curtis Furnas.
Hello, my name's Curtis Furnas and I'm a lifelong citizen. Used to be really involved with Trumero Corridor Association, the Blue Valley Neighborhood Associations, several other civic organizations. Now that I'm retired, I don't do it so much. But I live off of 31st Street. And I used to drive to work along 22nd Street. And it's kind of a broad, beautiful street, really. It does have a boulevard feel. And I wondered why the city didn't, hadn't made it into some kind of boulevard. And I'd like to tell you some of my points for why, why I think it would be appropriate. Number one, it starts at Grand Boulevard in the, in the Union Station, Crown Center, Crossroads area, which is a fairly nice area. Goes through the Hospital Hill area. And then you come to a bridge, you know, the 71 Highway Bridge going over at Bruce Watkins Drive. And I, I thought it would be nice to name both the street and the bridge because it's a very ornate bridge after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And then it goes near the Eighteenth and Vine area. Goes, there's new housing being built by, right by the Bruce Watkins Drive. There's the Beacon Hill area, just a little ways away. You can see it as you drive. And then you have, have new housing being built. You have apartments on Vine Street. They've been there a little while, but they're fairly new. And then there's new housing at the, where the old Monarch Stadium or where the old A Stadium was, I guess. I don't know what the municipal. But they have that Monarch Housing subdivision going in there. And there's new housing along Brooklyn. And then it comes out to the 22nd, 23rd Street Connector, which is already very nicely landscaped. You could go through there. And then pass and follow it to Benton Boulevard, which is a really nice street. And I thought it would be nice to have, begin at a boulevard and end at a boulevard. Of course, if you want to make it longer, you could stretch it out to Van Brunt on 23rd or, you know, to the Independence City Limits, I guess. There are areas associated with the civil rights movement in that area. There's Lincoln High School, Prospect Avenue, Eighteenth and Vine. And there, there are a few. I think maybe only one building on that street, which would be Lincoln High School, that actually faces 22nd Street. So nobody, except for the high school, would have to change their address, which is, you know, a big plus for businesses and residents. You know, and I, I think beautification of that street, what I would like to see would be cherry trees, ornamental cherry trees all along the street to honor Martin Luther King's juniors. I have a dream speech in Washington DC. And then roundabouts at key intersections. At 22nd and McGee is a very large round, or very large intersection. I'm thinking you could probably put a roundabout with a pergola, pergola. I'm not sure I'm saying that right. Or, you know, a bandstand or something on it. There's also parkland right at, or it's, actually it's vacant land. It's parkland now, but right at 22nd and Grand Boulevard that can be beautified and have picnic tables, shelter houses, whatever. And then other places where you could have roundabouts would be Paseo and then Brooklyn, um, Possum Truce. And also Prospect, which has been in the news lately as a dangerous intersection because people can't see around the new bus stops when they're trying to cross Prospect. And there've been several accidents there. So if you had a traffic circle there, that would solve that problem. So on, on these roundabouts, some of the things we could have would be a memorial fountain or a monument for Dr. King and or the civil rights movement. Memorial, memorial fountain or monument for the Kansas City Jazz history. A memorial fountain or monument for the Monarchs baseball team. You could have obelisk or statuary, flower beds and other landscaping. You know, it's not, not a real long street, but it's a street in an area that's historically connected to the civil rights movement. And it's also sit in an area that's growing, that has new housing coming up. And it, you know, and it starts at Crown Center, like I said, which is a nice area. So I, I think it could become a very stately and dignified boulevard. And that's my pitch. Thank you.
L.F. Thurston.
Good evening. I like Kansas City. It's not the only city I've lived in, but I don't know of any city that I've liked more. I have my roots here. My family has their roots here. It's not the only city I've lived in. I've lived in the Osho County, in Green County, in Chicago, in Gary, New York, in Texas, and in my military time overseas. And I've traveled to thirty-some nations. Kansas City is, I think, one of the most underrated cities in America. And I think this is a great opportunity for it to claim more of its capacity to be a model, both to its citizens, to those that observe us from afar to this region and to the next generation. And that's why I think when you invoke the name Martin Luther King Jr., it's a fit. I pastor a congregation right off of, on 12th Street, on the Paseo Corridor. So I'm very familiar with the bottlenecked and the conflicts of when the street was proposed to be named once before. And so I'm heartened that this process is, I think, more comprehensive to accomplish a goal, to do the right thing at the right time. Martin Luther King came to Kansas City. It's not a place he was unfamiliar with. He was here the year before he died. And so he was in tune to our city back then. And I wonder if we appreciate that as a city, what his sense of sensitivity, sensitivity was and what his connectivity was to our city and how we are measuring up now to the ideals of his life and of his work. My parents were at the March on Washington. They knew him personally. And these personalities that are seemingly larger than life, it's magnificent when a city embraces that for a clear purpose. And I think that's what's significant to many of us, what would be the purpose of this street being named. I heard someone mention earlier about our airport. I try to be an informed citizen, but I never got clarity on why that was no longer an option to name a progressive airport in a progressive city for such a progressive visionary. And that does not mean that every choice has to be an either or. It can be a both and. And I would hope that the consideration for this naming of the street would not exclude the idea of an airport being named. We have a whole lot in our city and county named for one of the most racist presidents that we recognize. We have many buildings, streets and numerous statuary for the one in 1812 that became a champion in the military and ruined the lives of scores of African Americans, led the Trail of Tears for over a million Native American Indians, including my people, the Choctaw, were slaughtered and were ripped from their inheritance. And yet we have no hesitance to have numerous, numerous memorials to President Andrew Jackson. We don't seem to be hesitant to name whole communities for a racist general in the Confederacy who could care less about the lies of persons that helped make this country and this community as great as it is. And so to have more than one reminder and one vision and one inspiration in our city and in our area, I don't think it should be considered mutually exclusive for a street, a boulevard, to be named for Martin Luther King. But I hope that would not be considered removing it as perhaps the most appropriate name for our new airport that would not have to change its name, but to complete its purpose. So we look at the times that we're living in now. And probably what has happened in the protesting in our city and other places has made the idea of this even more pronounced. Maybe were it not for all the looters that have seized the center of attention on the plaza, maybe it wouldn't be so clear. We need some new symbols. Maybe had it not been so many protesters in and out of the Black Lives Matter movement, maybe it wouldn't be so clear. There is not enough images, ideals, appreciation, leadership and followership. Maybe something good should come out of all of this commotion that our city, as great as it is, can be greater if we have more markers, if we have more checkpoints, if we have more reminders, if we have more interest in persons that knew our city, were a part of our city and a part of our history. And they certainly could perhaps be a part of the healing and the advancement of our future. And so Martin Luther King, he was born in Atlanta, but all his work was not in Atlanta, nor in Selma, nor in Birmingham, nor in Crozier, where he went to school, nor in Boston, where he got his doctorate, nor in Memphis, where he was assassinated, but included Kansas City. And I remember the night Martin Luther King was killed. I was a teenager. I remember it quite vividly. I also remember the rioting that broke out in Kansas City, not so much in St. Louis, but in our city. And this gave greater definition to the Black Panther movement in our city. And as I said, it became more and more inflamed and destabilized as the result of the senseless murder of this apostle of peace. Part of what brought some sense of stability and focus and I don't want to say normalcy because the norm was not good enough, was when many community leaders and community representatives invoked what he was and what he represented and his resistance against so much systemic evil, but in a nonviolent and productive way. So ironically, as Kansas City was on the verge of going up in flames after he was killed, it was his legacy that helped. it was his legacy that helped to bring some sense to a city that was on the verge of going out of control. So the timing perhaps, I don't think the timing could be better. Um, when there's pain, when there's division, um, when you still have the plight of certain sectors of our community that are disastrously disparate to the rest, where the opportunities are not the same, where the dream for many is a nightmare, when the life expectancy, when the mortality rate, when the portion of COVID- nineteen, where the family structure, where our schools, where our economic state, where, where our psychological state, our incarceration rate, all of those aspects of our community and the people in this city, the great divide has become apparent again to many that had not recognized it. And so to name anything and everything that we can that would at least give us some identity about how our city should see itself in its future is important. So I'm over sixty years old. I don't know about you. I don't know about you. I know about you. I don't know about you. So probably three quarters of my life is behind me. Martin Luther King never made it to forty. Didn't even make it to forty. And he left one, two, three, four children. So at this stage of our adult life as a community, we ought to be thinking about the next generation. And what are the symbols, symbols? What are the pictures? What are the images? What is the disposition? What is the climate? And as much as I like Kansas City, my favorite city, as much as I like it, it troubles me when I hear the next generation saying, I don't want to live here. I want to go to another city. And then they start naming them. Not everybody, plenty of them stay here and we are thankful for that. But not enough see themselves in a liberated, healthy, progressive, inclusive, peaceful, fulfilling place to spend the future of their lives, their career, their family, their church and their investment. So when we think about this whole naming enigma, we need to be sure we think about the next generation. Mr. Nichols is known far and wide as leading the first outdoor mall in America in nineteen twenty-two with his racist, bigoted, anti-black, anti-Jew, anti-Hispanic, anti-Jewish mentality. Generation still have to bow to the image of that hateful multimillionaire and real estate expert. Wouldn't it be beautiful if twenty years from now, forty years from now, um, fifty years from now, let's catch up with J.C., maybe eighty years from now, there's the name of a street, of a Boulevard, a name of an airport where the next generation could say, that name equals what the greatness of our city aspired to embrace. And so that's what we call this dynamic martyr, leader, visionary, selfless American, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I don't know how you do that in the signage and in the language, but most of us know he was a man of faith. And I think it would be at least worth a try to remember he was a minister. And the faith that he had as a Christian, as a pastor, was not one that caused him to feel excluded or entitled or in some way inherently superior to anyone else, whatever their faith position would be. But his faith was one of respect. His faith was one of resistance to injustice. His faith was one of both personal and systemic concern. His faith was one of putting his life on the line. His faith was one that embraced the God-given potential and goodness that should be the norm. And so when COVID- nineteen has run its course and we pray it'll be soon and when, and all of the civil concerns about, um, systemic flaws that we're wrestling with in our city and every other city. Hopefully, when the election is over and this season is passed, we will have some witness that in two thousand twenty, our city tried to do something else right for this generation and the generation to come. God bless you.
That completes everyone who has registered to speak. Is there anybody that didn't get a chance to register that would like to speak tonight? All right.
My name is Asia Campbell. I was born and raised in Kansas City. My grandmother lives right around the corner off of Forty Second in Kensington. Um, I look around the room in respect. I see a lot of elders here. I myself, um, I'm twenty-seven years old. Graduated Raytown South High School, went to George Washington Carver Elementary School, which is right up the street. Graduated with a bachelor's in marketing at Northwest Missouri State University. I've worked in radio. I've worked in freight. And now I have the honor and the privilege of being manager of business development at Kansas City Area Development Council, which is an economic development, um, organization here in Kansas City. I wasn't going to speak at first or even talk about my role, but there's something in my spirit that's telling me to get up here and speak because of what I do and the power that I have to shape the community and how young I am and my, my minority in the industry that I am right now. I am the only black at my economic development organization. And to my knowledge, I am the first black person or woman that has ever worked there. This is a forty-five, forty, maybe forty-six-year-old, um, organization. And what I've learned so far in my role is that we don't, as black people, we don't have the power and the say that we think that we do, just to be very, very honest. So when we talk about naming a street, and I'mma just be clear, I know about the school. I know about the park. There's a lot of things that can be done to, to, to add assets to what's already here. Unfortunately, I understand the great value of Martin Luther King. But when I look around my neighborhood and I see King Middle School been abandoned for fifteen years, that does not add value. There is a mural that sits outside of, I think it's Thirty First with Martin Luther King on it. There's nothing in front of it. Even the great Walt Disney has a art stadium, art studio here where he started, where he drew Mickey Mouse. There's nothing there. We fail as a community to truly honor the people that have passed through Kansas City. Eighteenth and Vine still struggles to this day. Thank goodness they had their centennial so they could get donations, but they struggle to this day to bring adequate, adequate revenue in tourism to that area. I believe that naming Martin Luther, Dr. The, The Boulevard, Dr. Martin Luther King is extremely divisive. It is plain redlining. It's, it's broad day redlining. I'm sorry. You can call it what it is. I understand. He has a history, but let's talk about it. You look over here, Brush Creek has been abandoned. There's a whole island growing out of it again. I, I used to, I, I drive past it all the time. All of the sod and the soot, y'all just let slide over there. Don't let it rain for ten days and ten nights. This area is going to flood and be gone. So I just want to be honest and clear how I understand the value of Dr. Martin Luther King. I understand the value of George Washington Carver. I understand the value of honoring all of the musicians and the talent and just all of the culture that we have here in Kansas City. It's truly important. However, this is a device mechanism. And I would hate, I understand you talk about the generation. I am the generation. The next generation and the next generation. Naming a street is not going to change anything. But what will change is if we can get more, more assets into skills and training. And it blows my mind that I'm the first black economic development person. Why, why, why don't people like me know about industries like this where we can actually make real change? And I went to, uh, quote unquote, black school. I went to George Washington Carver Elementary. That school is literally a Mexican-speaking school right now. Does that make any sense? It doesn't make any sense to me. So again, I understand the value, but when we talk about what the future looks like, we have to make it make sense. When, when I learn about other communities zoning and planning and how they do it and what they do and who they shake elbows with, I mean, it's amazing what you find out. And I understand it has to be done strategically and correctly. However, again, I don't know if there's a power that be that we just must have a Martin Luther King street. If so, I do like the gentleman's, um, idea about having it go, again, somewhere that connects, make it make sense, that connects multiple neighborhoods that go together. But this specific area, I mean, people pass, it's a passerby. They pass here to go to the plaza or they pass here to go to the suburbs, to Raytown, Altalee Summit. Nobody comes here. It's sun fresh. I mean, it's, what else is here? I mean, you had H and I, I don't even know if H and I block is still here. But there's plenty of opportunity here for commercial real estate, for office buildings, for what I see going up in, in other communities, in Lee Wood, in Overland Park, in Lee Summit, in Greenwood. There's all type of developments around us except here. And all we can come up with is to rename a street. It saddens me. And, um, yeah, that's, that's all I have to say. I mean, I'm just in true, um, not in favor of naming it Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that has given everybody an opportunity that signed up. And, uh, at this point, we'll probably end the public hearing. Do either of the commissioners have any comments before we, uh, end the meeting? Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm, I've been on the Parks Board for a long time. And Ajamo, thank you very much for your fine presentation. Once a commissioner, always a commissioner. We look out for the citizens of the entire city of Kansas City, Missouri. This is a beautiful city. I'm told by numerous peoples that come to visit that it's one of the nicest-looking cities uh, and one of the friendliest cities in, in the country. We have our shortcomings. There's no question about that. We are human. Uh, we are very appreciative of everybody's comments. They're heartfelt, well-taken and much appreciated. And we will take everybody's comment, thought and idea to heart as we go through this, uh, deliberation. And again, thank you all so very much.
Commissioner?
Um, good evening, everyone. I, uh, I'm, I'm honored to share this space with you all. I think that something like this should never be reduced to just a street, ever. If you say Dr. King's name, it's bigger than that instantly, sheerly based on his name alone. We have not appropriately honored Dr. King. There is work to bring the park up to par actively. But what I want to implore, like, really, really impress upon everyone here is that as a Parks and Recreation Board Department, we have a lot of assets. Frankly, more than we can take care of. So what does that mean? It's not they. It's not you. It's not y'all. It's not them. It's we and it's us. Pick up a bag, put trash in it, plant the trees. Whatever it is that you see, just do it. I like the comment about growing the ambassador group to fifteen hundred. Let's go beyond fifteen hundred because that's what it's going to take. Because we can throw tomatoes. We can shoot down every single idea that ever comes across. There will be more. But until we take ownership and look at this city from a collective lens, progress is just a word.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank all of you for participating tonight. Uh, this is an important process and, uh, we want as many people who want to be involved to be involved. And, uh, we will go forward with this process and this will, uh, be dealt with, uh, as required under the city charter. Thank you for coming this evening.